This time I'll call the September meeting of the Board of Education to order. This time, Board members, would you please rise for the Board's invocation? Let us pray. Our most gracious heaven and father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together tonight to make decisions for our school system. Lord, we ask for your wisdom, guidance, and direction on what you would have us to do. Lord, we thank you for the start of this school year, and Lord, we ask for your continued safety concerns over our students, staff, and employees. Lord, we ask that you guide this board, direct us in what you would have us to do. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Please join me in the invocation, I mean, in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. That's twice I've messed that up. But who's counting? Under announcements, I'd like to announce that our next meeting will be here at the Education Center on October the 9th at 7:00 PM. That'll be our next regular Board meeting. Board members, please let Ms. King know if you plan on attending the District Eight Fall meeting. It'll be over in Buncombe County at the Nesbit Discovery Academy from 4:00 to 8:00 PM on September the 28th. And I'm sure that we need to let them know pretty quick on that, reservations and all. Are there any other announcements? Okay. Under agenda adjustments, I know of only one, and that is that we need to take action tonight on our North Carolina School Board Association voting delegates. And we'll, at this time, if you don't mind, just go ahead and take action on it. Before the meeting, I've asked for some volunteers that would be willing to serve as voting delegates for the North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference. And Mr. Jimmy Rogers, Mr. Jim Francis, Ms. Ann Barrett, and myself would be the four voting delegates, and we do allow for one alternate in case something happens. And we've designated Dr. Bobby Rogers, it's been known to him. So, that's what you get when you don't show up sometimes. Anyway, at this time, we entertain a motion. We approve the list of delegates as presented.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Henson's made the motion. I hear a second.
Second.
Second with Ms. Barrett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. I'd also like to back up just a little bit. Yes, sir, Mr. Henson.
Finance has a couple of agenda, uh, things to be added to the agenda.
We'll just add it under your regular monthly financial reports, if that's okay. All right, without objection. There being none, they'll be added to the agenda as presented. Okay. I would like to back up and say that Mr. Smith had business requirements for him tonight. Dr. Bobby Rogers is out due to some back surgery. He's getting along well. I'd ask you continue to pray for his continued healing. He's not supposed to be out in public or out anywhere to where he might get infection, so his surgeon's looking after for him for that. He mentioned to me that he's not even supposed to go through the drive-through. And I said, "Well, why would you be going through the drive-through anyway, Bobby?" But anyway, Mr. Rogers had another meeting he had to be at this evening, but that's where our other Board members are, and I just wanted to make those announcements. Any other agenda adjustments that we need to make? Okay. At this time, I'd recognize Mr. Jeff Haney for some special recognitions.
Good evening, Mr. Francis, Board members, Dr. Nolte, and Dr. Garrett. It is an honor to recognize anybody that works in our school system. Sometimes we get caught up in the negativity of what's going on in schools. We are a very, very good school system. We have very, very good leaders, but we have teachers in the classroom that are really making a difference in our classrooms and leading our students to achieve better things and continue on as they go on to high school and go on to college. It is my honor to introduce Mr. Todd Barbie, and I'd like for him to introduce his teacher from Canton Middle School.
Mr. Francis, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, it gives me great pleasure to recognize a long-serving Canton Middle School teacher, Mr. Dwayne Squires. Come on up, Mr. Squires. Mr. Squires has, for many, many years, served on the Middle School, North Carolina Middle School Association Board of Directors, and most recently, he was recommended to be the conference director of the North Carolina Middle School Association for the entire state. So, it gives me great pleasure in recognizing Mr. Squires for this great honor. I appreciate everything you do for our kids. Thank you.
If I may, I would like to thank Mr. Barbie and former principals who have allowed me
My name's Barry Feldman. I'm the agriculture teacher at Central Haywood High School. I teach agriculture, horticulture, and environmental natural resource. And right now, we're in our greenhouse, which is one of the projects that we do that culminates
the few days off during the year to go to Board meetings and to help put on this conference.
all of the whole year, having students plant plants and sell them at our plant sale, which
And I appreciate Haywood County for being the kind of system that allows teachers to
will begin in May. And if you scan around the greenhouse and take a look at the hanging baskets that we
step outside the classroom and be, in a different setting, be a professional in middle school
have and the plants in pots for landscape, and some are permanent as perennials and
education and promote what we value in our profession. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
some are only annuals for the last year, and we have vegetables and herbs.
Thank you. Here's the question.
Chairman Francis, we're gonna show just a real quick video, and then I'll introduce
People will be buying these for their gardens this year. So, students come in and spend about half their time in here planting up things for
our next guest.
the greenhouse. And if we go outside, you'll get to see the actual greenhouse itself, which is a hoop house, covered with plastic. As we're going around, you'll notice we have a tool shed over there. We keep the majority of our tools. Our rototiller's there. Here is a compost area that we're making soil with. And the way we make soil is with all the plant material that we have. We stack it, put water on it, soil, plant material, water. It's sandwiched in, and over time, it will start to break down and make soil. So, we have several bins like that. Over here, you see these raised bed gardens. These are raised bed gardens. Each garden has a specific theme. This first one, we have our salsa garden that we make for our spices, tomatoes, onions, parsley, cilantro. The second one right here, we have our herb garden for cooking, rosemary, thyme, basil. And then we have some wildflower gardens over here, a pentamin, salvia. There's a mint bed and a lupin bed. And we're gonna go across the way to look at our pond to be. Okay, here we have piles of topsoil and organic compost plus manure, and those are gonna be placed in this raised bed garden over here for plantings. And that is what has gone into every raised bed garden that you saw earlier. Over here, we're creating a level pad for a storage shed for our tractor. And most of these projects have consisted of grants and generous donations from the community. Over here, we have an area which is gonna be our riparian area, which is a wetlands pond. This was also a grant, and we'll be lining it with underlaying carpet and then plastic vinyl before we fill it with water. Over here, we have our crops, which will be tilled in about another week or so from the tractor, and we'll be planting corn, tomatoes, peppers, carrots, beans, potatoes, and squash. And the neat thing about this is, is that in the harvest, the students get to take back the food to their families in the community. One of the great things about CTE is that this particular class allows a student to get a career in agriculture, and there's so many careers in agriculture that you could choose from, from the service industry to owning a farm to being a wildlife manager. There are just so many things that all base around agriculture and plants and the soil. And soil is very important because good soil produces good crops. So, if you're interested in a class like this, I suggest you take it at one of your
All right. So, I teach business here at Central. I teach four classes next semester. I want to teach personal finance, principles of business, Microsoft Word, and PowerPoint, and entrepreneurship. How can those classes benefit you in the real life?
Going into a business, making money, if you have like a project or something to do, like a reading project for college, you know how to do it, a word or something like that.
Personal finance, how can that benefit you in the real world? When you think about personal finance, what is that? Personal is you, and then finances has to do with?
Money.
Money. So, if I say Ethan, Kyle, Caitlin, whoever, how can a personal finance class benefit you five years, 10 years down the road?
Do you know how to manage your money?
Right. So, personal finance, we cover everything from a depository institution, which is a bank, what banks do for you, interest rates, taxes, a credit report, and so forth with that stuff. Principles of Business, we will cover anything from a sole proprietorship, a partnership, a corporation, international business, a message business, and stuff like that. Microsoft Word, we cover how to edit a document, PowerPoint, how to create a PowerPoint presentation to get you ready for the business world. What is offered with Microsoft Word and PowerPoint? What can you earn?
What you mean, money?
No. Well, eventually, you can earn money, but this is a certification class. So, if you can't take a class and get certified in Microsoft Word and PowerPoint, present that to an employer whenever you're being interviewed, and it'll make you more attractive than somebody else that's not certified already.
Oh, okay. That sounds like fun.
So, do y'all have any questions?
Nope. No questions over here.
I'm all good.
All right. This is Electrical Systems Program, and what we're doing here is we learn all of the phases of residential wiring, all the way through AC/DC right now. We are in the classroom a couple days a week through lecture, going over box fill, wire pulling sizes, panel boxes, that type of stuff, how diagrams work, how the circuits work. Then the students come over here into the lab, which is set up with about 12 or 14 boards. Once they come in here, they take a plan that I give them, and they begin to wire it, and they begin to put together the circuits that I lay out and the way that I diagram it for them. I give them a blueprint, therefore, they have to read the blueprint and understand what they're doing, have to explain to me what they have done. It has to be code, and then I give them a grade on it. A lot of the students are doing very well this program, that when they, if they continue through this for the two-year program here, they will graduate from HCC, Haywood Community College, with a certificate in electrical. If they come and decide to finish the program, they've got two more semesters, they're finished with it, they'll graduate with a diploma. Right now, I have a lot of electricians calling me, looking for people to hire, because right now, our workforce is very low, and this is a great opportunity for students to get in it and work their way into it, and possibly within a few years, have their own license, maybe even start their own business, and make really good money, and have a good way to support their families, and have a good thing going. Because what a lot of people don't understand is, without electrician, smartphones don't work, iPads don't work, cameras can't work, because they've all gotta be charged. Without electricity, you have no lights, you have no receptacles, you won't be able to cook. So, with our jobs, it's very demanding, and right now, we're in low demand of workers, skilled workers coming in. We need more than what we have, so hopefully, with this program, it will feed HCC, and HCC can get these students what they need to get them out into the workforce.
My name's Ms. Brown. I am the Foods One, Foods Two teacher here at Central Haywood High School. Today, we are in the kitchen. We are covering our cakes unit. These are some of my advanced students, and they have passed a very hard curriculum, Serv Safe. It is a certification that they get that is nationally recognized by the National Restaurant Association, that will give them the upper hand whenever they go into the food service industry to not begin at entry level. There are certain things that we are required to teach in this curriculum for Foods Two Enterprise. Serv Safe, like I said, being the beginning. Then we have a knives and skills unit, and they learn about garnish. They also have a cakes unit, which they're working on right now. They're getting to start their character cakes, and that is a huge, huge portion of their grade. The last portion is their breads unit, and they are learning just essential things to be entrepreneurs and successful in the culinary business. I love teaching at Central Haywood High School. I absolutely love this class. It teaches them the basic skills that they need to success post-secondary. So, thank you very much.
to the real world? When I say real world, I'm talking about electricity, I'm talking about foods, I'm talking about tourism and stuff like that. Mr. Mashburn asked me, he said, "Can you get our video shown to the Board?" And I said, "Well, sure, I'll call and find out." And we were able to do that. So, I'd like to introduce Mr. Mashburn and let him explain some things going on at Central Haywood High School. And the amazing thing was, a student from his school produced this video, so he wants to introduce him also.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Board members, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, as you can see, we have a lot of great things happening at Central Haywood. And it comes to no surprise for the members or the people in the audience, but we are working hard to, you know, kill the stereotype that's out in the community, but I have great kids. We have four young men in the electrical program last year completed their certificate, and they graduated from HCC, and they're continuing on at HCC to get their diploma now, and they have, you know, jobs waiting for them. Eighty percent of our Foods Two class passed the National Serv Safe Certificate. So, we are, all of our kids take the academic classes, but they also all take our CTE courses, which are excellent, and our partnership with Haywood Community College with the electrical program. And this year, we added building and construction. All of our classes are full. The kids really enjoy what they're doing, and again, thank you for the opportunity that I have to be here. The young man who put this together is Chris Strater. Chris is a junior this year, and he is working towards his graduation, but we are so proud of him and what he has accomplished here. He, since he came, he's pretty much straight A's. He works hard in the classroom academically and in our elective courses, but I just wanted to present Chris and then the fine work that he did on this video. But again, thank you.
Before I start, I would just like to say thanks. One of my friends, Zach, he lives in Virginia now, but he produced all the music that was made in there. He made that music, and I really liked that. Thanks to all the teachers for letting me point a camera at them and like scared them a little bit. This is actually what I want to do for a business, not schools, filming schools more of, but that could be a future if someone wants to do that. But I've actually gotten better equipment since then, and I, this is just what I like to do, and I'd like to thank the school for letting me do this for their school. Thank y'all for recognizing this video.
Thank you, Ms. Mashburn, for presenting the videotape tonight, and thank you so much for letting us see what's going on at Central Haywood High School. It looks like a lot of good things are going on. And one thing I learned at NC State is that it's not, he said the right word, the Ag teacher said the right word, it's not dirt, it's soil. Dirt is what you wipe off your feet, soil is what you grow crops in. It's a living organism. And we'll forget that in that soils class. I said, "Oh, I've been down the wrong path my whole life." This time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Jeanne Valliere.
Chairman Francis, members of the Board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte, it is my pleasure tonight to recognize two of our sponsors in the community that, they sponsor many things, but one of the things that each of them do is the Principal of the Year and the Teacher of the Year. So, I'm gonna introduce Mr. Rufus Dale from RDS and Dan Jesse from Evergreen Packaging to present our Principal of the Year and Teacher of the Year with a gift.
It's been my pleasure for several years to sponsor the Principal of the Year Award, and I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the Board and Chuck, Dr. Garrett, for the support that you give to the Foundation Board. It allows us to do a lot of things much easier, and I don't know how often you get thanked for that, but I want to make sure that we've done that. So, thank you very much.
It's my pleasure to present to Sean Paris the Principal of the Year Award.
I'd like to thank you all for this recognition today, and, you know, Principal of the Year, I'll be honest with you, it runs me a little wrong, because I think it should be Pack of the Year, because honestly, it's not about just what I do, it's about what the teachers at my school do, it's about what the kids at my school do, it's about me calling people and saying, "Hey." I mean, I know I drive Todd Barbie and Trevor Putman crazy, calling and asking for their advice, Mr. Haney, couldn't live without him, but it doesn't stop there. It goes back to my days at Jonathan Valley, and I didn't know these ladies were coming It goes back to my days at Jonathan Valley and I didn't know these ladies were coming today to support me. Even, you know, we just continue in Haywood County, teachers supporting each other and principals and school board members. So, I thank you so much for this recognition tonight, but I think we need to change the name of it in the near future. Thank you.
Mr. Francis, Dr. Garrett, extinguished visitors, guests. On behalf of Evergreen Packaging, I would like to present the Teacher of the Year Award. This year's recipient, much to my wife's disgust as she knew who it was, went to ASU, Appalachian State. My wife happened to be a Western grad, so she said to overlook that if I would. But this individual has a legacy of teaching in her family, has had parents, grandparents, aunts that have all taught. And obviously, the apple doesn't fall far from the tree. But she says she gives 110% to teaching children and making, teaching the children and making their lives better. And I got to believe that because having lived with an educator, I know what dedication you ladies and gentlemen put into that. In her, I guess, her acceptance or her resume of application, she was quoted as saying, "We must teach as if their lives depend on it." Because it does. Because that's really, I think, most years was in elementary grades, correct? No, in elementary grades, you really establish a foundation that helps the Todd Barbies and the Sean Perrises of the world when they get to the next level. So, on behalf of Evergreen Packaging, the Haywood County School Foundation, it's my privilege to present to Ms. Kristi Blackburn, the Teacher of the Year Award.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, guests. This has been an honor that I can't describe appropriately. But to much of the people who I've seen here today, I completely agree. I want to thank Haywood County School System because I really got a nice start here and because of the administration, because of all the people that have been, I've been able to work with, the principals, the teachers, it's really made a difference in who I am as a teacher. And I can't say enough, thank you. So, I agree with Ms. Parris that it is a PAC award. And I believe in the fact that it takes everybody to raise our children and we do have to teach as if our lives depend on it and theirs because that's for us too and that's what makes a difference. So, just thank you all so much. Thank you for the opportunities you have given me throughout my career. Thank you for supporting us as educators. And I'm just overwhelmed. I'm extremely overwhelmed. I am, to be chosen by my peers and to be chosen by the committee, it's quite an honor. And I look forward to serving and representing us well in the next steps. So, thank you all very, very much.
Congratulations, Ms. Blackburn. Congratulations, Ms. Parris, on the awards. I was honored to be able to go to Juneau Lusk Elementary the other morning and I saw some dancing and celebrating at that school like I've never seen before. Congratulations and I know that you'll do us proud in the competition to come. Ms. King, has anyone signed up to address the Board in open session? Thank you. Board Members, you've had an opportunity to look at the August 14th closing regular session minutes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to be approved as presented. Ms. Barrett's made a motion. I hear second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Francis. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This time, we have a presentation from Mr. Trantham.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, last week at the work session, we took a few minutes to discuss seat belts on school buses. And I appreciate that. Seat belts on school buses have a bit of a hotly debated past, but as more data has become available, it's been, it's become clear to members of the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, other federal administrations, school bus safety specialists across this country that putting three-point seat belts on buses is a smart move. A few years ago, North Carolina actually created a pilot program and then expanded that pilot program each year since that allows schools the opportunity to possibly opt in to adding three-point seat belts to their school buses, beginning with the buses the year that they opt in and continuing every year after that. So, what we're not asking tonight is for a directive to go and put seat belts on 72 school buses all at once, but rather to begin that process of each year when we order buses, to see that those buses are equipped with three-point seat belts on each of our seats. One of the things that, as I ask for your approval to begin that process tonight, we need to take into consideration, is that at some point in the future, it is going to require you as a board to change a policy that exists now that allows students to opt in to any kind of safety harness to a policy that makes the use of seat belts mandatory. That is the ones, the one requirement from the state if they're going to fund those buses. And so, I ask for your approval for that tonight. I ask that to, I guess, to simply put it, because we can no longer, I can no longer in good conscience, avoid the conversation about putting seat belts on school buses. It is inconsistent with our mission as a school system to provide a safe environment for our students to learn successfully.
Again, you did do an excellent job presenting that at our work session in more detail. And I think that what we'll do is, I'll entertain a motion at this time that we do give you that directive that you need to proceed. And then, I would also, after that action's taken, I have a few comments after that. This time, we entertain a motion that we approve the directive that we will come up with that will meet the criteria that you need, okay? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to allow us to pursue putting seat belts on our buses as we order them and replace them.
Okay. I hear a second. Second, Mr. Clark. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
What I would like to direct at this point in time is our policy committee take up what Mr. Trantham has asked us to do and to look at our policy, Mr. Shepherd, and see if there's some wording that's probably already in place that will meet the criteria for the state and bring it to this governing body as soon as possible for official action so we can take care of that. Part of our end of the bargain.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trantham. Well, speaking of Mr. Shepherd, you're next.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board.
Good evening.
Okay, so, tonight, we have two policies for first read. The first one is 3565. This would be a brand-new policy. It's Title I comparability of services. It's something that we already do. It's just a check and balance to make sure that we are spending Title I money to federal money to supplant, to, I'm sorry, to supplement, not supplant, money that we ordinarily be spending on students in those schools. So, we already do it. I checked with the finance people to make sure that this was not going to add, you know, a layer to them that they couldn't deal with, but she said, you know, we're already doing that, so.
We'll table that policy until, for public input until our next board meeting on October the ninth for approval.
Okay, and the next one is Policy 4700, Student Records. The change on that one is to remove from just general directory information that would be provided to pretty much anyone who requested it, the address, phone number, or email address of a student. And we thought about putting that in a separate section that would allow military and institutions of higher learning to be able to have access to that information, but that already by law is enumerated farther down in that policy. So, if we just remove it from that list of general directory information, it's covered lower in the policy that the military recruiters or if institutions of higher education needed that information, we could provide it to them. So, it's already taken care of in that policy.
Okay. So, we'll table 4700 changes until next board meeting and for public input until October the ninth at our next regular board meeting.
And hopefully, we can have that seat belt policy tweak ready for you.
Okay.
When we come back.
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Now, I'd like to recognize our finance chair, Mr. Hinson, who's got our regular monthly reports and a couple of other items, he says, so.
First off, we went over all the monthly financial reports and I'd like to put in a form of a motion to approve the monthly financial reports. Everything looked good.
Okay, we have a motion from the finance chair, Mr. Larry Hinson. I hear a second. Second, Ms. Barrett. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next up, I would like to put in a form of a motion to approve the bus driver pay table as presented to the Finance Committee by Mr. Trantham. Actually, the state has allotted money to give bus drivers a raise and we're implementing that.
Okay. So, there'd be no additional cost to us, it's just
Right.
The state money and how we allocate it
Right.
On the table, okay. So, we have a motion from the finance chair, Mr. Hinson, to approve the table as presented to the Finance Committee. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Francis. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next up is a motion to approve substitute bus driver hourly rate to be at the step zero rate on the bus driver pay table. And what was it, Mr. Trantham?
Twelve fifteen.
Twelve fifteen will be the start pay.
Twelve dollars and fifteen cents per hour.
For the substitute.
Okay.
And that's a form of a motion.
We have a motion from the finance chairman, Mr. Larry Hinson, to approve the substitute bus driver pay at twelve dollars and fifteen cents, which is a step zero, is that right?
That's step zero.
That's step zero, okay. Which could
That way, does it move?
If it moves, it doesn't have to go back to twelve fifteen, okay. It's step zero, period. End of motion. Okay. Do I hear a second to the motion? Mr. Clark has seconded the motion. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next, we have a motion, I've put this in form of a motion, to approve the occupational and physical therapy salary schedule. And basically, the state has required us to have a schedule and for salaries for those people and we're just complying with what they want.
Okay. So, this meets the criteria that's set forth in the state?
Correct.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve the schedule as presented to the Finance Committee and approved by the Finance Committee.
Correct.
Do I hear a second to the motion?
I'll say.
Second, Mr. Clark. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One more.
Motion carries unanimously. One more, Mr. Hinson, you're on the good streak now so far.
The next one is a motion to approve the SEC Service Agreement to provide advisory and consulting services for wage evaluation of non-certified and administrative employee groups. The cost to us, the contract is fourteen thousand five hundred dollars plus travel expense, which we've been assured that should be less than two thousand dollars on it, travel expense.
Okay. So, we have a motion from the finance chair, Mr. Hinson, to approve, what was the name of the company?
SEC.
SEC, okay.
Service Agreement.
It's a service agreement, okay. Do I hear a second to the motion?
I'll say.
Mr. Clark's made the second. Do I hear any, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? I'm sorry.
This is just to, you know, we talked about a couple of meetings ago about sort of some discrepancies and how the state, when they've increased salaries, have let some of our other employees didn't keep up with that and we were going to come in and look at the different, you know, salaries ranges and based on other LEAs and see where we stood. So, this is just the study for that.
It's basically the county commissioners. In our joint meeting, this is one of the companies that they recommended that we
Look at.
Look at and get consulting from as far as how to
Be competitive in our
Be competitive
In our district, yes.
With our pay and salaries.
All right. Any other discussion or questions? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's all from the Finance Committee, sir.
Very good. Now, we'll have Dr. Garrett with our personnel.
We only spent sixteen thousand dollars.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, before I do personnel, you do have the 10-day ADM count in front of you and you can, we did a breakdown on the 10th day of this year as compared to last year and then did a comparison of the pluses or minuses. And you can see as of the 10th day, plus or minus one, we're up 27 students.
Can I ask one question on that? The early college, I see, was down 19 students. Did we not accept as many or did they not, did we not have that many applicants? That many, less applicants or?
To that too, we had Okay, he may, he's not here. He was here, I saw him earlier. We had that application process and that's read by the principal, myself, and a representative from the college. And we simply didn't have as many applicants who met the criteria of going up there and taking college classes their freshman year as we'd had the year before. And we hope to up our game with recruiting and change that number as we move forward.
Very good.
The criteria is very strenuous to be, to ensure that those students actually can complete, complete college courses their first year.
Well, you want them to be successful in that program and every slot's very valuable.
Yes. And when you look at our numbers for the comparison, we actually added some teachers, not necessarily because of the over-enrollment, but because, so that we could comply with class size and then also with the ADM count. Meadowbrook actually lost a teaching position. We had placed a teacher over there and when we did our count, we actually had misplaced that teacher. Iswood actually gained a teacher and a teacher assistant. Bethel Elementary, they gained a first, fourth, fifth, and then teacher assistant as well. Not necessarily because the increase in numbers, but to make sure that we were in compliance with the rest of the county. Clyde lost a teacher. He didn't really lose a teacher because he ended up picking up that teacher with Title I funds and it was not supplanting at that time. Waynesville Middle School picked up a sixth-grade teacher and then Canton Middle School picked up a seventh-grade teacher. For personnel, if you look at your personnel, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, you have 16 separation from employments, two separation from employments, 10 employee status changes, seven leave of absences for your information. For your approval, you have 26 employments, 43 employee status changes, contracted services, you have 25, substitutes five, two employee coaches, two non-employee coaches, and six volunteer services. Your approval.
This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the personnel as presented.
I make a motion to approve.
Ms. Barrett's made the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Francis has seconded the motion. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, I mean, motion carries unanimously. Very good.
I'd like to say that I'd like to thank Mr. Hines, I think he recognized some employees earlier this evening about the way they're getting the paperwork done for our new employees, and I just wanted to echo that, that we appreciate that and the fact that we're getting good information on our employees, and we can make good decisions, and tell those folks that we appreciate their hard work and dedication for that. I think we'd be amiss if we didn't mention the fact that we did maintain and stay in the top 10% of school districts, and I'm sure we're going to have more of that. I know we'll have more information about that in a lot of detail, and I know that one of the reporters asked me, says, "Are you disappointed or happy that you're in the top 10% and didn't go up?" And I said, "If you see that the folks are nipping at our heels, you'd be tickled to death to see what we saw." And I know that there's areas that we can improve upon, but overall, I'm just really proud of our school system and our teachers, employees, everyone involved in Haywood County Schools, the community. It's a community effort, and we just see tremendous amount of support for our school system. You don't see that across the state everywhere. And so I just would like to say congratulations to our administrators and to all of our employees for, again, being in the top 10% of the school districts. Thank you. Does anyone else want to make any comments before we adjourn? If not, the meeting adjourned.